Ms. Stee, we came out of executive session at fee twenty-one and nobody left executive session. We came back in. All right, I'm gonna try to get this correct. Cora will help me with it. If I don't. Our next agenda item is personnel. But pursuant to our right to add executive session, I'm proposing to amend the agenda to include personnel action item E. And that will be a personnel action to hire Philip Shively, full-time police officer, at seventeen dollars and sixty cents an hour, effective December tenth, two thousand twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel A through B.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel actions are approved. Thank you, folks. Takes us to our ordinances. Our first ordinance, item A. It's the second reading of ordinance twelve twenty-one, a supplemental appropriation ordinance. Can I get amended for a motion on that, please?
Make a motion to approve second reading ordinance twelve twenty-one supplemental appropriation ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Stee, would you call the roll, please?
Dave Burris.
Yes.
Wes Brians.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Bill Lukin.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance B, first reading of ordinance twelve twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twelve twenty-two and ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Hot Springs and declaring an emergency. Second motion.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Takes us to resolutions.
Roll call vote for that one also.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Stee. Thank you, folks. We need a roll call vote on that one.
David Burris.
Yes.
Wes Brians.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Bill Lukin.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me that chart. Takes us to resolutions. We have motion for resolution two thousand twenty thirty-one. That's our citywide fee resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash thirty-one. Citywide fee resolution setting fees and charges for services provided by the city of Hot Springs.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. Next one is resolution two thousand twenty thirty dash thirty-two. Resolution to surplus city property.
Make a resolution to approve two thousand twenty dash thirty-two resolution to surplus city property, Southern Hills Golf Course, and Log pile.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Resolution two thousand twenty dash thirty-three. Resolution to abate nuisance West Oak Building.
Make a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty dash thirty-three. Resolution to abate the nuisance West Oak Building.
Anybody want a second then?
Second.
Discussion.
Is this one that we should hold on to and take, possibly wait for two weeks and see if Luke can come back in two weeks with a viable proposal before we make a decision on demolition?
Well, wouldn't that put us back in the same position we did before, waiting for a contractor to do the job? I mean, we have to wait on the timeframe. I just don't, no disrespect, I just.
No, I'm asking the question. He, you know, Luke, Luke came up and we, we've rejected the first proposal and, and so I feel like this is the time to have that discussion. And so I'm bringing it up now, realizing that we've talked about it a lot, but, so I feel like this is the time to have that discussion, so.
I believe the same as the, the earlier proposal, that even if, on the chance that this person may or may not still be interested, we are gambling with time. There's too many variables. And as Wes said, it's a gamble. We're taking the risk of putting the rest of town at risk at a three-year project that they may not survive. And that is personally a risk that I'm not willing to take.
I think if we was gonna take anybody's, we would've took Uriah. I mean, he seemed like he's pretty confident in it. I don't know about this other guy. I don't know him. He never talked to the city. Not saying, you know, he's talked to Luke, but.
And I just want to say, I, I brought the subject. I opened the door for discussion, but I tend to agree that the, the opportunity's been out there for a long time. We have a, a hard decision to make. We have a very tight timeline in which to make it. And we've got a hard decision to make that nobody really wants to make, but it's before us, so.
I have a problem making a motion to demolish the West Oak Building. I just wanted to add one last thing. When the mayor, you sent that video over and I saw that, about the building just falling for, just film, right? And this is just me. I might, I drive by the building every day and at any given time I see people walking in front of that building. I see cars drive by. I look in that window and I see a young lady trying to support her family. I, you know, I'm just, I'm just not okay with this. There's too many lives being involved at any given time of the day. I mean, you see, you know, I see that. Somebody's walking by, it falls right on top of them, you know. You can't give a life, you pay money, but you can't bring somebody's family back. So that's just my, my thoughts.
I would like to state maybe a change on, if we do vote for this, to make a change on the last page, the second paragraph, or the first full paragraph. It's for the resolve that the city shall solicit bids for the demolition of the West Oak Building. I'd like it to be put in there that we would like to retain or, or demolish it in a way that the stone can be saved.
Oh, I agree one hundred percent.
No, because when we got the bids last time, they gave us the bids and said, but if you want to save the stone, that's gonna cost more. So we need to specify that. We want to save the stone, at least the, the sod stone. The other side, I'm not sure about the back, but I know the side is more of a rebel-type stone. But the decorative stone, we, we need to put it in here somehow to save that, you know, in its best condition. Wherever we can insert that.
What kind of timeframe is you're looking at to do that? What with the demolition going on? I mean, well, that still was. I'm not against it, I'm just asking. You save every stone.
You can't save every stone. It's not really possible.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, I know there's going to be mishaps and things are gonna break and, but we need to make the attempt to save.
A reasonable, a reasonable attempt.
Yeah.
To save as much as usable stone as possible without committing a major increase to the positive demolition.
Because it will save us, those decorative stones will save us the seventy-three thousand dollars in the sidewalk bid that they have designated seventy-three thousand dollars for decorative stone, allowing those, the, the canileered sidewalks. So it would be worth our, a little extra money to save the stone.
John, would that be something that we would put in the request for proposal for the demolition?
Correct. We would put that in our request for proposal.
All right. So that's the guidance from the council, that if this is approved tonight, then to make Deborah's request, language would be added to the request for proposal to save as much of the west wall, the west facade as possible for reuse elsewhere in the city.
Isn't that something we've been talking about since, you talked about it, didn't you? Saving the.
When we got the bids, that wasn't part of the, for the previous scolded. Information we were looking for. They didn't.
We didn't, but it didn't.
No. There was just a comment that, well, that'll cost you more. They didn't say what, but all that stuff.
I thought scolded extra to save the stone, but Schumannic did not.
We haven't formally requested proposals for demolition yet.
So that's what this motion would do. Is direct the city to obey the problem, the demolition, and go off the request for proposals, to see what those bids are.
Because there was comment, when we, when we put out the ad, trying to get interest in saving the building, there was several comments, well, I'll do it if I get the stone. So we just need to verify that the city keeps the stone.
Isn't now the time to vote on the fact of taking down the West Oak Building?
Isn't that what this resolution does?
Yes. This, this.
We don't have to revisit this if we're gonna add to it. We could vote on it, with the exception of adding, and that would be.
Always can add that to the proposal, but you hang out.
We don't have to add to this.
That's what's going.
Go ahead. The only rest of the language that you will look at at the next council meeting.
If I may say so, I had to step out for a minute, but, well, think about this ordinance. I know we had that, that kind of, that gentleman that came in and said, somebody's interested in coming in and taking over the project. I will state that this resolution, if something like that did happen in a time of matter, it's a resolution. Council can always come back and amend it or, you know. Make a proper words, go on, but, or change. I just would like to make a note of that for the council.
Unless the building's already down.
So basically, what you're saying, we could vote on this with the option of bringing that door open for somebody to walk up and say, I could, I could do this project?
I don't think it has to be.
I put it this way, if, if something we can do later, we could still come back and grab this resolution. This starts the light switch of, of moving forward for John to go get proposals. If, if a certain retired billionaire who's coming up for retirement in January wants to come in and remodel the building, I say that jokingly.
Oh, my uncle.
And with council can turn that light switch off. I would agree with that one. This gets, this gets the ball going. If some, I'll say miracle, or some, something happens that changes the circumstances, council can revisit this order, or the resolution.
So at this point in time, we don't have to add any language to this to vote a vote on, right?
Right.
All right. Any other questions? Is everyone clear on what they're voting on? Ms. Stee, would you call the roll, please?
David Burris.
Yes.
Wes Brians.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Bill Lukin.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. I'd like to thank the council for their willingness to step up and make a difficult decision. I know that you have talked about this repeatedly. You're making an informed decision, everything that you've heard before. And I appreciate your willingness to step up and do that. Thank you. Takes us to new business. New business item A, possible motion discussion to accept or reject a bid received from Rich Olstead on the Armory property.
I would make a motion to accept the bid received from Richard Olstead on the Armory property.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion.
Do you want to say something, Rich?
Here, here, if you need any questions.
I'd ask Ms. Stee to include in your information side of the packet, an action that was taken by a previous council, would be on June fifth of two thousand seventeen. And it was a brief idea of meeting the demands for housing in Hot Springs, a plan for utilizing excess city properties. The city properties that were identified at that time are the old water fill station. We've seen what's happening there. The Butler Park Armory property described the possibilities there, and then the old water tower lot, and the South Garden Street lots. And because this was approved by previous councils, they felt this was a good way to go. I just thought it needed to be part of background for the Butler Park Armory property and what the city was trying to do and going out for a request for a proposal to develop that property. But, does council have any questions for Rich?
I'd like to see a background tax notice.
I do have a sketch of my floor plan, idea that I'm working on right now, if anybody wants to see it. Sorry about that. I do have a sketch of a floor plan, as I'm starting to work through that, if anyone wants to see that here tonight, but that's my plan.
And your plan doesn't include building any kind of outbuildings on it at this point?
No, I'm gonna stay within the footprint of the Armory building that's currently there, with the exception of doing some drainage on the west side, because when they, when the city redid the streets up there, they built the prop, the street up, and it's created a drainage problem on the west side with some water issues on that west wall of the building. So I want the concrete to get the water off that side of the building to make that, so, so it's not a building that's a problem twenty years, forty, fifty years down the road.
I thank you for taking us for the walk, so that we could get a really good visualization of what was there. Appreciate that.
I just wanted everybody to see what was there, know what they were looking at.
Just make sure your tank gets a narrow key.
I don't want a tank. Craig wants a helicopter. I don't want a tank.
I have a question. What was submitted for this? It passes everything required legally for the Armory and the lawsuit to be commuted. Is that correct? Does it pass everything that was required?
Yes, the, the settlement for the lawsuit requires that whatever goes in there meets residential zoning requirements. And the proposal was passed through planning and zoning. And they felt like it, I felt like they, they agreed that Rich's proposal, as described to them, would meet the requirements of residential zoning. So there isn't a pressing need. It's, the proposal doesn't have to be accepted, accepted because of a timeline. I've talked with Rich a little bit, that I was on council when this particular proposal, this plan was, was approved. And we were looking for something more robust out of that particular property. That was the reason why we offered it up as whole lots rather than just a single lot, hoping that we would have more affordable housing that would be on there than just a single structure. But we've been working at this a long time, and this is the only proposal that we've gotten for it. But there isn't any pressing need to be any deadline, but it is the one that you have in front of you for consideration.
Make a motion and second on the table.
Yes, that's true. There is.
Yep.
Any other questions for Rich? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thanks. Just to Debbie's comment about saving sandstone, the fifth floor of the Evans Hotel is still here. And that sandstone's all still a bit. I don't know who, I don't know who has the legal right to it, but the sides in the back of that building are still laying in Hot Springs.
It's not available. They've used a lot of it. It's up there by.
It's still, there's still a lot of stone there.
It's up there by hills material.
Yep, yep. But there's still a lot of it there if you need the sandstone for your, for your sidewalk project.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Congratulations. Number seven, item B. Possible motion discussion to authorize the mayor to apply into the U.S. Army donations program for a helicopter.
Did we figure out what transportation costs?
We don't have a motion yet.
Make a motion to accept this?
Can you read the motion?
I've read it once. I should have read it. Make a motion to authorize the mayor to apply to the U.S. Army donation program for a helicopter to be displayed at Centennial Park with a maximum dollar amount, prepared to pay for de-militarization, not to exceed a thousand dollars table from last meeting.
Second.
And there's.
Discussion.
A thousand dollars does not go in with it. We don't have to pay that until one's set aside first. So no money needs to be paid at the time we apply to it.
Do we have any idea what transportation's due?
We don't know where it's gonna come from, so nobody can guess how much it costs.
Okay, well, that's what it applies to.
So should be clear with the motion, should not include with a maximum dollar, not prepared to pay for de-militarization, not to exceed a thousand dollars?
Well, the de-militarization, we're paying for labor to tear apart anything on it to definitely.
It, it needs to be in here, but we don't have the data either way.
Okay, so you still want a motion here to save it up here, right?
No.
To your point, as far as transportation costs, the consideration was, get the transportation cost from Florida to here, get one from Maine to here, get one from Washington to here, and get one from Southern California to here, and it shouldn't exceed the highest of those four. But the transportation costs have not been determined.
Is this the only place we can put it?
I have a question. Can the public talk?
Come toward.
No, the, the council can choose to move on any city property you feel that's appropriate for it. The recommendation is to have it at Centennial Park. A little closer, a little closer to the microphone, please.
My question is, and it always is, whenever I see anything come up about the parks. So we spent a fortune several years ago on five-year plan. And we're continually doing things in our parks that cost money, but we're not doing things in our parks that cost money that were on the five-year plan. So I'm not complaining, I think it sounds like an awesome thing, but what about all the money we spent on the five-year plan? Why aren't we putting money on that instead of additional?
Sounds like you're complaining.
Well, it, I mean, I, how much did that cost, that plan?
I don't recall.
Probably two or three times, I want to say, but.
I don't, I don't.
I just, I, I see it all the time. And we, people donate things, and it's really nice, benches, things like this, and then we come through and we say, oh, our, our ballparks aren't big enough. We got flagpoles here. Now we gotta redo all this. I'm just saying, maybe we should look at the five-year plan before we always are.
Is, is the parks, they're not, are they, are they getting?
Thank you, Val. Not, not at this park. Not if it's placed at Centennial. You know, there's always gonna be things that can come up and be added to the parks.
Oh, yeah. That's why I was asking the question, because if you are, then we have it now. That is on the plan. It is on the plan. But I, I agree with him. I, I didn't even catch up, but I agree with what, what you're telling me. There's always gonna be something coming up.
I personally like that location, because it's right there by the Legion. And I think it's a focal point of Hot Springs. I've, I've driven through a lot of these towns that have some of these helicopters, or tanks, or big anti-tank guns. I just think they're, they're neat for their town. I mean, I guess we gotta start thinking about the next generation.
But if we can keep them from destroying it.
Well, I didn't want to go there, Larry. You know, the next generation, they don't want to see any kind of, they don't want to, they don't, they don't want to think about what, what our veterans went through, so we could have our freedom. But I like to see it as a reminder.
Thank you, Wes.
I, I question the location, not because I don't appreciate our veterans. And I, I understand it's a nice place next to the Legion, and I love the idea of having one. And I think it'd be great in any location. But I have just heard so many comments about what Centennial Park is used for, and the groups that are there in the summer that are already outgrowing it, and they need all the space they can get. And they put money into our parks, and they're being, not purposely, but ran out of room intentionally. There's other places we could put this, where it would mean just as much, maybe not as great as being next to the Legion, but there is electric and water, things at Centennial for these markets that if we, they're running out of room already, and we're gonna cut into it. And those downtown events are so wonderful for our community, that I don't want to negate what they're doing. So that's my reason for questioning the location where we put it.
Well, I, if you get a, if you get a standard Huey over there in that corner, okay? And if you look back to me, last four or five years, looking at how far our, the park goes out this direction, you've got more than enough room to put that standard Huey right there. And is we gonna get something bigger than a Huey? I, if we get a Huey, great. If we get something smaller, we got plenty of room over there. So that's something to think about, too. If you've never ridden a Huey, you don't know how big those puppies are, okay? Thank you, Caitlin.
To, to Caitlin's concern, I think, Fred, you had talked about. To Caitlin's concern, I think, Craig, you had talked about elevating it.
Yeah.
So that it's not on the ground, taking up a huge footprint, still allows some space down there to be utilized for the Arts and Crafts Festival and other things, is that correct?
That's correct.
And it's going to be high enough that little kids aren't going to be climbing on it?
Well, if they're really good, they could, it could be way up in the air.
Way up, okay.
Enough for tents to be under it, or the market people?
Yes.
Okay, satisfied by that?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. No business item C, possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the two-year Golf Now contract. Motion on that, please?
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the two-year Golf Now contract trades up to two tee times per day during only designated time periods in exchange for the EZ Tee Off Golf Now point-of-sale and reservations products.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question, on the back page, top of the lower boss, it says the client shall be required to use a booking engine powered by Golf Now. I think it'd be able to just call in and say, I'd like to golf, and I don't use a computer or I don't have a smartphone.
They already currently use Golf Now, they don't have that problem?
Yeah.
All right.
I guess, I'd like to know what the dollar amount is, what the amount to be?
I can tell you that we attempted to estimate, and that's why we have this agreement. We will work to determine through that point-of-sale how many times it's used. They can't guarantee a trade time will be booked or not. If up to four tee times in that fifteen minute period trade time, two people could book it, three people could book it, so within a year, we should have that information for you, because I would like to know also.
Well, I just know, we used to do some trading with a mechanic, and we were told we couldn't legally do that anymore. So I guess I want to know how all of a sudden we can, all of a sudden, trade with these people.
I agree.
Do we say we're already doing this?
We are, this is the point-of-sale that we had at the golf course without a written agreement.
How long have we had been using it?
It's been there as long as I've been here, and that's five years.
Well, at one time, the city used to trade with Gordon Norton Golf Cards, and the city told the golf card supervisor he could not trade memberships and stuff for work on those golf cards.
This type of agreement is one that's used throughout our state and many other states for the point-of-sale software. Instead of having to pay an annual fee like we do for the software that we use at City Hall or Evans Plunge, they offer trade barter times for the agreement, and as far as I know, our term is here, it's legal. So I wasn't part of the city during that last conversation, and it sounds like labor would be different than trading for a service like this.
So we could possibly trade some memberships to Evans Plunge to a contractor for certain things, is what we're saying?
No.
I'm not wearing.
Don't we do like swimming classes for membership trade?
Yep.
So.
And I will say, I have not researched this issue, so I don't know, I can't give an opinion, yes or no, it's something that has never been brought up. I just know, I've seen this kind of crap go through council before, and it's just never been questioned, and I do know, I thought we did trade Evans.
Yeah, I'm not saying we can't, I'm saying that's not what we're voting on.
I realize that, but I'm saying this goes along the same lines, so then basically in the parks, we could try to trade contractors for different things.
Put in a spring person?
Exactly. I question this deal, I really do, because we were told point-blank we couldn't legally do it before, so maybe the laws changed, I don't know.
And I say, at this time, I don't have a opinion, yes or no, we'll have research.
Well, maybe we should think about tableing this till we actually have a valid answer.
So with this, the advantage to the city is when you take a look at the trade times that we're talking about, we're talking about a two o'clock trade time and a two fifteen trade time. There's only one opportunity per day for that two o'clock or that two fifteen trade time. Once it's gone, for the day, it's gone. So what these folks are offering us is an opportunity to give us some software that gives us the ability to take reservations for tee times across the country all day long and draw those golfers into our golf course in exchange for giving up two tee times per day. So we're coming out ahead, to Wes's point, to what degree, as Misty said, I'm trying to get a better handle on that, but the offer itself certainly is to the city's advantage to be able to use that software to make reservations throughout the day, and just setting aside two tee times through the day that these folks would be able to sell and get the revenue off of that.
It is our entire point-of-sale, it does all of the golf tee time booking at the pro shop currently, so if we didn't have this, we would look to other point-of-sale software that keeps track of our inventory and does all of our tee time bookings. It doesn't just do it for the ones that we trade for.
But we could also purchase the service from them, too.
That wasn't an option they gave us, they don't offer that.
Well, how long have we been using it?
As I said, for as long as I've been here.
Listen, we have no contract in five years.
Prior to that, it could have been used also, does anybody here know?
Well, how do we pay for it now?
We don't, we have trade times currently, we just didn't have a contract.
Oh.
I think it's a good idea, but I keep going back to like what Wes said, at one time, they told the city they couldn't trade, and maybe it was labor, I have no idea, but they couldn't trade with Norton anymore.
And who is "they"?
The city.
Oh, who's "they"?
City attorney.
Okay, so the city attorney told the city that they couldn't do?
Yes.
Okay.
Table it on our attorney.
All right, well, we, is there, is there a push for it to go through this year?
No, we can table it on our attorney.
Then we just table this? Or we hold on it and just go read, find out for, for our information whether or not we can or can legally trade, but if it's something we've been doing, it's not like we're doing anything different. Does not mean you can't get the information needed to, like Wes brought up.
So the motion in front of you is to approve and authorize the contract, or if that's not what you want, then the maker of the motion will need to amend it, to table it, and see whether the second agrees with that. But the motion in front of you is to approve it.
Well, I guess the one thing that I question about is, this seems to be a nationwide process, that it's not something we dreamed up on our own, it's a product that's out there, it's, it's not a, an under-the-table.
Well, I'm not saying.
No, I know that, it's just, it's, it's a product that's out there that we've been utilizing for years, that we're formalizing through a contract. I guess, I don't, I guess I don't see a problem with continuing, my concern is we're going to spend more money having Garland research it than we're going to have.
And the city was previously told we could sell sand at the airport, we found out we can't do that.
No.
Well, I'm not an attorney, and I don't, I don't pretend to be one, Bill, I just like to err on the side of caution.
I understand.
Well, I like to say this as a new council member, I don't have a clue what this is all about, so I'd like some more information, I mean, honestly, but that's just my view.
I feel at this time, whether you approve it or not, it's semantic since we're already using it, but I wouldn't mind knowing, like Wes said, for other things, if the sprinklers, I think that research would be valuable research.
Yes.
Okay, so I will, what do I need to do, table, amend it, to table?
Amend your, amend your motion to table?
I will amend my motion to table this item C regarding the contract. The contract with EZ Tee Off and Golf Now point-of-sale reservation products.
Second. All right. So we have a new motion from this to table, new business item C. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I will go along with that, instead of having Garland, before we have Garland do the research, there's a, there's a group that we normally rely on, it's called municipal, they have attorneys in place for such matters, so maybe we could make a contact with them and just ask them, and maybe they can tell us real, real quick.
And, and the explanation, it's on the books of why or why not?
Sure. All right, that's the council's direction? We'll do that. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion to table, new business item C, passes. No business item D, possible motion discussion to accept the request for Fall River Sanitation to terminate the city of Hot Springs solid waste contract.
I make a motion to accept the request for Fall River Sanitation to terminate the city, Hot Springs solid waste and recycling collection and disposable contract effective 12/31/2020, as opposed to 12/31/2021.
Second. Discussion? Your folks have, in your agenda, received a letter from Zane Verhols, Lance Verhols, Clay Verhols, Brett Courtney, signed by Lance and Brett, asking to be released from the last year of their contract. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. No business item E, possible motion discussion to authorize the library director to accept the United Way of the Black Hills Early Learning grant.
I make a motion to authorize the library director, Don Johnson, to accept the United Way of the Black Hills Early Learning Innovative Grant in the amount of $2,000.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. No business item F, possible motion discussion to approve automatic budget supplement. Any motion on that, please?
I make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $224,320.80 to additional sales tax fund to 12-21200-43300 for the Jennings Avenue Bridge construction reimbursement revenue received from big grant funding.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item G, possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement, $20,080 to the golf course pro shop.
I make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $20,800 to the golf course pro shop machinery and equipment budget, $620-451300-43400 for the stolen golf carts reimbursement revenue received from the SDPA claim number GC2020105429.
Second. Discussion? Craig, were you the second?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item H, possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $10,075.85 to the police department.
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $10,075.85 to the police department vehicle repair budget 1014210042510, repair hail damage on 2019 Dodge Charger number 0277, and 2019 Dodge Durango number 1898 reimbursement revenue received from SDPA claim number GC2020104731.
Second. So. Discussion?
Is this the exact amount of cost for the big golf cart?
Mine's the deductible on each. Five hundred dollar deductible on each.
How much?
There's a five hundred dollar deductible on each.
Because I thought, I read the minutes, it's like, I couldn't draw them, I thought it was like seven thousand piece of things.
They're at this back plate, you just approved both of them, they were right over five thousand each.
Five thousand, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item I, possible motion discussion to recognize and record the names of three suppliers and their quotes received for the purchase of eight thousand gallons of aviation gasoline.
I make a motion to recognize and record the names of the three suppliers and their quotes received for the purchase of eight thousand gallons of 100 LL aviation gasoline by the Hot Springs Airport as required by South Dakota Code by Law 5-18C-6. Purchase was made with oral fuel at $291 per gallon, other vendors considered for MG oil at $340 and Epic Fuels at $302.
Second. Discussion?
What's the current price out there?
$4.35. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Takes us to committee reports. First one, administrative finance, Caitlin.
I've been financed met today at 1:00 PM at the Mueller Civic Center. Present were myself, Mayor Nelson, Misty, John, Bill, and Deb. We had a very short and sweet meeting. In old business, we discussed pending ordinance revisions throughout the different committees. We have at least four ordinances being worked on at least, including our bid ordinance, historic preservation, a day-to-day ordinance, and the residential tax rebate ordinance. We also heard updates about surplus items from the PD, which will hopefully be up for auction soon, and a potential commercial tenant, the Hot Springs Airport. In new business, Misty provided her monthly finance officer reports. Misty's working diligently on taking advantage of all the CRF dollars that we can, and we appreciate her diligence in that. We reviewed the 2021 proposed fee resolution that was in tonight's agenda. There are some changes and additions taking place, and as an update on our future laptops, due to the current COVID situation and people in schools remotely, there's been a demand for laptops, plus for the Christmas season, so there's a current laptop shortage, it might be January before we see them, but they're in the works, and we're excited to see them. Our next meeting is January 4th at 1:00 PM at the Mueller Civic Center.
Any questions, Caitlin? Thank you, Caitlin. Next is Airport Advisory Committee, Bill?
Airport Advisory met on Thursday, November 19th, 8:00 AM at the airport. Members present were Larry Vennerman, Ed Jensen, Petrie Wilson, and John O'Comall. From the city were Ivan Vennard, John Gregory, Tracy Bastian, and Scott Soggy. Elected officials were Mayor Nelson and myself. Ivan provided an update on the potential lease arrangements with advanced aerial technologies. He's working on, working to free up about 3,600 square feet of the city hangar for their commercial use, and would likely include a monthly lease for the hangar space plus an additional utility charge. Once established, that agreement will be brought before this council. Ivan updated the committee on the design work for the. Ivan updated the committee on the, uh, design, um, uh, work for the T hangars. Soil borrowings have been completed and a pre-design meeting will likely be scheduled sometime this month. A newly developed charter for the Airport Advisory Committee was distributed to the committee members. The charter outlines the purpose, membership, leadership, public membership criteria and terms, key activities, deliverables, key interfaces, and critical success factors for the committee. As of, uh, November nineteenth, we've had fifty-five flight operations and sold seven hundred and seventy gallons of aviation fuel. Ivan is conducting an airport-wide inventory and identifying potential items for surplus, either with the city or back to the South Dakota Department of Technology's Aeronautics Division. The committee was informed that, uh, we're taking another look at the heated hangar, uh, fees, and since we are an A I P funded airport, these fees will need to be in line with other regional airports. The committee was informed that the rental car through the, uh, turo dot com app is actually located in Ardmore, so the, uh, at present, there are still no viable rental car options, uh, for airport users other than the city's car at the airport. Ed suggested that a credit card reader be installed to handle overnight hangar rentals and oil sales. Currently, customers must write a check or pay with cash. Having this convenience would require customers to pay the processing fee, so this additional service will continue to be investigated. A draft revision to the Hangar Construction Guidelines was distributed to the committee for review. The revisions incorporated recent ordinance changes. Once the committee completes its, uh, review, a revised document will be brought to the council for approval. The meeting adjourned at nine eight, nine A M., and the next meeting will be Thursday, December thirty-first, eight A M. At the airport.
Evan, can put guidelines for being viewed and updated?
The Hangar Construction Guidelines.
Any questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District meeting for November twelfth.
Larry, could you pull your microphone a little closer, please?
Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Can you hear me now? For November twelfth, twelve twenty twenty, was called to order at seven oh four P M. By Chairman Mike Lindy. All members were, were present except for one. All motions were approved by, approved unanimously, uh, unanimously, unless otherwise noted. No conflicts of interest were noted. The November twelfth, twenty twenty agenda was approved, the September tenth, twenty twenty meeting minutes were approved. Treasurer's report was received and current interest rates on the first interstate money market account was discussed. The treasurer's report was approved, a, a status report regarding the fees associated with providing credit card payments service was reviewed. After discussion, a motion to double the convenience fee rate for credit card transactions from under one hundred dollars from one dollar to two dollars and increase the rate for transactions of one hundred and above from two percent to three percent. Information and security policy is required by Clover Security for the use of the credit card machine with a policy template provided. Annual compliance certification and staff certifications, in addition to quarterly security checks, will be completed by the landfill contractor in coordination with the Deputy Secretary Treasurer. First data global leasing requires to clove credit card machine to be insured during the term of the two-year leasing agreement. An update on the QuickBooks desktop version was provided, the final reports and documents requested by the auditor were prepared and delivered. Kathy Dolan with First National Bank providing information on it, FDIC insured cash through public funds account. Contact was made with Russell Olson, Auditor General, Department of South Dakota Legislative Audit, to determine if the district falls within South Dakota Codified Law Chapter four dash five dash five and four dash five dash six to four dash five oh dash eleven, which appears to limit CD investments to using South Dakota financial institutions. South Dakota does allow for the use of financial institutions that are part of the C, Cedars program to be allowed under the South Dakota Codified Law four dash five dash six point one. An update was provided for information purposes only, no action was taken. Next meeting will be January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M. At the Mueller Center in Hot Springs. Meeting was adjourned at nine fifty P M.
Questions for Larry?
Can I get that date, time of the next meeting? I'm sorry.
Nope. Next meeting will be January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M. Mueller Center.
Thank you, Larry. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Deborah?
Yeah, I'm trying to verify my next meeting here. Six, yeah, okay. Um, the meeting is called, uh, December second at the Mueller Center at five P M. Present was Brian Powers, Luke Royals, Brian Crawford, Steve Weenie, and Joe Muller. Also attending was Joe Allen, Scott Sogi, Uriel Newellin, and I attended by phone. Application for certificate of appropriateness submitted by the copy kiosk to move the kiosk from the Cipco Plaza to in front of the Inn by the River or the American Inn, uh, was approved unanimously upon motion by Weenie, seconded by Muller. Discussion was had on the flagpole behind the American Legion. The city is unable to find the application for certificate of appropriateness approved by the commission some years ago. It also is unable to locate the minutes of the meeting at which the decision was made accordingly, even though the commission believes the flag that, believes that the flag presently on the pole should be much larger. There's no further action that can, that it can take. Extended discussion was had on the West Oak Building. Mister Newellin told the commission he had submitted a proposal to the city and was awaiting its response. Mister Allen spoke about possible effect effort to have the county lift the moratorium on the sales tax certificates for the limited purpose of this building. He and Mister Newellin are pursuing that possibility. Mister Newellin said that he had a viable plan to stabilize the building, which should alleviate the D O T's fears about construction in front of the building. He disputes the D O T's conclusion that the building is in danger of falling during construction. And he says that the road construction will not cause vibrations exceeding those which are taking place as the result of ordinary traffic to the road. Mister Weenie expressed concerns that any plan should be able to force the person undertaking it to complete the structure stabilizing the building so that it, his building is no longer in danger. The commission has in the past written to the city council that it favors preservation, but if preservation is not possible, demolition in light of the safety issues. While the commission would like the building to be preserved, it has no power, money, or ability to do that. It will be up to the city council to decide what to do with the building. The commission expressed its deep desire to help preserve the building in any way possible so long as surrounding property owners and the general public are protected. Discussion was had related to ordinance revision. There was a general consensus that we need to form a smaller group that meets outside the regular meeting to focus on the ordinance revision so as to not get sidetracked with other issues. Several members expressed an interest on working on this. We will arrange this for sometime this month. Now, meeting adjourned at six ten P M. And the next meeting is Wednesday, January sixth at five at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Deborah? Uh, a couple things on the flag, Deborah. The, uh, original council minutes, uh, meeting, I believe, is in two thousand thirteen. I think it's around June, I can get a definite date for you there. But, um, the, the flag itself, uh, I've been talking with, uh, Dave Hoskins about the flag and working with him and Ed Harvey with the American Legion. Dave, it confirmed that until an engineering study is done, that the flag that's on it is the largest flag that can be on it. So need to, uh, because the Legion is the one that has the contract, uh, with Verizon, uh, I need to talk with Ed and, um, ask him, um, to work with me to get in touch with Verizon, provide them the site I D. For our tower so that their folks can actually take a look at it, uh, and tell us in writing, uh, what size flag can be on the pole. If you've noticed in over the last week and a half, it's flying much freer than it did, uh, when they first put it back up. It does look awful small up there, uh, but Verizon will tell us what size flag can be up there, not publicly.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Uh, thank you for your report. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Larry?
Next meeting will be December tenth to twelve P M. At the Evans Plunge.
Thank you. Park Recreation and Beautification, Wes?
Yep, we had a meeting Wednesday, December second, three P M. The doggy bags were discussed again, we're gonna, we're gonna make some more of those plastic holders. Gerald is gonna mark the, the lights over there at the, uh, tennis courts or the basketball field, I guess, we're gonna have Mister Paolo, Paolo come and figure out what's going on there. Uh, discussed the stock to parts, the upper and lower. Removal of the spring bolt is probably gonna take place after the first of the year, once these guys get caught up on some other stuff. Talked about using some, uh, compost or some dirt to fill in that low spot, clear at the west end of the upper park. Um, touched on the school street park again, the wooden playground equipment, the merry-go-round. They said they can probably straighten that up, they said they've trained it up in the past, but hopefully they can, they're straightened up this time in the state. Um, Gerald has cleaned up all the weeds up against that, uh, embankment or the bank, and he's kinda looking for some, maybe dirt or something from us to, uh, help facilitate some flowers maybe over there. Um, I guess it's just a matter of getting Dr. Williams and we can make something happen. Kenny Springs, we're, we're still waiting on our letter, I believe, unless they showed up.
I haven't looked up at Hill, see if they could be in the February and tail, the park bill letter, but I don't know if they did.
It's quite a, quite a deal. The Sentinel Park, uh, we had a lot of discussion on that again. I think it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be positive for, for our area down there. I mean, until it's actually completely done, I guess people can't really see the vision on it, but it's, it's gonna help, I, I think it's gonna be kind of a bonus for the people to be able to get down to that river. Talked about the grass areas, we gotta get the contractor in there to spring as fast as possible, to spring, try to get some of that stuff fixed that he tore up, I guess, or damaged while it was working. Brookside Park, we, we still gotta, we gotta get our F P. Out for that sprinkling project for the spring, but we, uh, we haven't got the dirt worked in on that yet, so. Freedom Trail, we just started the conversation on maybe using some of our streetlights down there on the trail to actually get some more light on our trail. I think it'd be a great thing, and everybody was in agreement, they all thought the same thing, the more lighting we can get down there, the better. Um, Mueller Center, the H B A C. System is, it's getting better all the time, but, and we're just waiting for money to catch up, for the, the budget money to catch up so we can keep doing more, but there is some heat coming out now. Um, the depot, we're, we're still having some issues, we, we gotta get some bids on electrical panel. Um, hopefully, I don't know, we, we can get that down here eventually, but that's not a hurry at this time. The Umerker Park, the guys got the trees taken out, they took out the concrete, they put some grass seed down, and, uh, somebody, I think, must have been Gerald, must have staked off the corners so the people can get an idea of the actual footprint. Um, still waiting for some of that money people to show up, I know Gerald, he, he secured some money from somewhere. Uh, under the new business, we discussed the True Green, touched on that briefly. Talked about the Wittenburg Memorial, um, that was approved at our council meeting. Lory update is on the cemetery, things are still going quite well there, I hear. And T-Ball Field, the new fencing project, they're, I guess they're still trying to get some quotes on that. And that was about it.
Any questions for Wes? Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning, Caitlin?
Our next meeting is December sixteenth at six P M. At the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you. Public safety, Bill, J R?
Uh, public safety met on Wednesday, November eighteenth, one P M. Here at the Mueller Center. Uh, present were J R., Deb, myself, Larry, John Gregory, Chief Close, Captain Wenscock, Lori Scherrard, and one member of the public. Chief Close provided, uh, an update. Captain Wenscock has, uh, changed the on-call schedule for the officers. Uh, this change allows more home and family time for the officers and still provides necessary routine on-call coverage. Um, applicants for the open officer position, uh, were still being reviewed at that time and, uh, the committee meeting, and of course, we actioned that earlier. Uh, because of the current, uh, issues with the Attorney General of South Dakota, any issues pertaining to investigations uh, with the Attorney General's office in the West River area will be handled with the Pennington County State's Attorney Office until those issues, uh, are resolved. Deserture system is now live and there's been no issues to date. Familiarity is growing and the time spent on, uh, report writing is decreasing. Uh, the meeting with the new Fall River County State's Attorney went well, and the police department expects excellent support from his office. Uh, the proposed removing of the morning no parking signs on Jennings Avenue at the elementary school. Uh, the proposal was made because the signs contradict the curb markings and it's been causing a lot of confusion for drivers. Chief Close also discussed the benefit and need for in-car computers. That's not a budgeted item, we just discussed the need for it. Uh, the remaining black vehicles are being scheduled for wrapping. And in October, our officers responded to five hundred and seventeen calls. Under old business, um, we discussed the traffic control signs, um, on Baltimore and Detroit avenues that a member of the public had brought to, uh, to us earlier. Uh, the intersection, intersections in questions are not on through streets and therefore would not normally require signage. Uh, an appropriate sign will be placed on Eighteenth and Detroit because of limited visibility. Uh, we looked at four different options to address requirements for family daycare providers. Uh, the committee recommends, uh, adding a daycare supplement to the use permit on review form and then revising Title fifteen, Chapter one fifty-five under planning and zoning as ne, as necessary. Uh, this recommendation will be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Committee. Uh, we continue to discuss the police department vehicle replacement policy. The next draft of this policy will expand the policy to an overall vehicle policy to address various aspects of police department vehicles. Lori provided an update on a plan to acquire the necessary, uh, three hundred and sixty-degree amber lights for city vehicles. Four portable lights have been purchased that can be shared as needed. Uh, we continue to discuss the specifics of the crosswalk and curb markings in the Moccasen Springs area on Minnacotta. And regarding the, um, floodball railing request there at America's Best Value Inn, and we're continuing to gather information on that request. Member of the public was present to ask- Member of the public was present to ask if the city was considering a mask mandate given the rise in COVID-nineteen cases in Fall River County. This resulted in a lot of discussion. At this point in time, the committee does not recommend a mask mandate primarily because of enforcement issues. Stated previously, we believe individuals and businesses choosing to require masks for themselves and users at their facilities are the most effective way of implementing that safeguard. The committee initiated discussion regarding compliance and action plans associated with Amendment A and initiated Measure twenty-six. Until we receive guidance from the legislature, we can't really do anything. We will, however, continue to gather information from our other resources to determine the various controls that will need to be put in place from a city ordinance standpoint. A charter for the Public Safety Committee was distributed for review and comment. And other items brought up for discussion, a question on whether or not we can designate parking spots at intersections on Chicago Street, at the intersections for compact cars only to improve visibility was brought up. Since this is a state highway, we cannot control this. A question regarding transient vendors was brought up, and the review of the ordinance indicates that these vendors, even if they're on private property, need to have a license from the city. Question was brought up regarding a large rock above School Street that appears to be split. Situation's been this way for quite a while, but is being monitored. Our next meeting, or the meeting ended at three ten P M., and our next meeting will be Wednesday, December sixteenth, one P M. here at the Mueller Center.
Anything to add, J R.? You covered it. Any questions for Bill or J R.? Thank you, gentlemen. Public Works, Dave and Craig?
Craig, a lot of the notes on S P is I was in prison.
Prison was myself, John, Scott, Billy, Tracy and Bob. Those two were very late for the meeting. We had a short meeting, like Caitlin, of four hours. The light pole from the Jennings Bridge has been cleaned up and painted. They're gonna be reinstalled on twelve seven. Alley maintenance, line spots, shrubs, trees and stuff, they're working on it as we talk. I have a meeting. D and R, required fence around the MRF is done. Right now, they're working on the bleachers. They go up to the softball and baseball field. They're gonna plane down the paint on what wood is good. And they're buying new wood, and they got an estimate of nineteen hundred and one dollar ninety cents. And they're gonna stain and set paint because the paint holds in moisture and rots the wood out. We're supposed to meet on the sewer at Lincoln Avenue. Ronnie Elliott, he did not show up for the meeting. They're getting, they want a new line location equipment. Cost will be sixty-two hundred. They're getting estimates on it, I guess. Nothing's been decided. Additional water valve for Waterloo, Maine, the Jennings Bridge, we're putting in a new valve. They're doing it for us on, let me see if I get this right. Some of the work didn't cost as much as it was bid, so the valve isn't gonna cost the city anything they have to put in. Hope I got that right. RFP, light maintenance is a three-year contract. First of the year, we're gonna be going over that. For all river water users, twenty-twenty-two contract. We talked to them about it, and there's a few changes, I understand, and we sent it to Misty. North River Street, reconstruction in front of Evans Plunge, Gerald, eleven seventeen. Get report back in two to three weeks. Crossbuck's is up, whoever we talked about. Traffic light, University of Chicago, the light. The timing on the east, west, north and south, east and west is really short. But from what I'm told, there's wiring under the street that's messed up. And when we put the new street in, all the new wiring will be put in, new lights and everything. So it'll be fixed and it'll be equal, going back and forth. Our next meeting, Public Works Meeting, is December fifteenth, one o'clock. It says here at City Hall, I believe, it's at the Mueller's there. That's all I have.
Any questions for Craig? Thank you, Craig. Southern Hills Economic Development, J R.? Thank you. The Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee will meet next Monday at five o'clock at the Nelly Center. The person's down to our finance officer reports. Misty?
Thank you. I was able to provide financial reports through the end of November in your council packets. If there's any questions on any of those financial reports, please let me know. I had had it prior to the meeting. We do have a C D. that is maturing, our waste, or I'm sorry, our water C D. that's debt service reserve. Currently at First Interstate is maturing the thirtieth of December, so I will have some information about renewal rates at the next council meeting. As many of you probably are aware, the city of Hot Springs recognizes a accrual-based accounting, which requires that we recognize both revenue and expenditures in the year in which the object or service was recognized or obtained. We kinda summarize what that means and what that looks like and why we do that in the memo. There's an expectation that department purchases are restricted to emergencies only after the last play batch for the year is paid. And we are expected to have payables and receivables in within thirty days. That's generally accepted accounting standards. But historically, we extend that a bit farther so that we do accurately reflect or provide users of our financial statements, a snapshot of the financial position as of the end of the year. I have an update on the impacts of the pandemic on revenue collection throughout the city. Very similar to the updates I had given you previously. In many ways, the pandemic has not financially impacted the city. The largest impact we see is in our recreation program, Mueller Center revenue, library revenue, and Evans Plunge. Our bid revenues also down a little, as well as our liquor, lodging and dining revenue. But our sales tax revenue is up. Our golf course had an excellent year. And we have received financial support from both the CARES Act at our airport and through the state with our C R F dollars. We had over a hundred and forty submissions for reimbursement. As of today, we've received over four hundred thousand. We have approximately three hundred and ninety-one thousand remaining. Finance office will continue to submit reimbursement requests for expenses through twelve thirty twenty. I have thirty-one on the notes, but the eligibility period does end on the thirtieth, not the thirty-first. Thank you for your approval of the twenty-twenty-one citywide fee resolution. I noted some of the changes that are on there. They were easy to identify as they were read on the resolution, not too many. We hope to have this resolution passed. It'll be effective January one, and we have an expectation that those are fairly consistently applied throughout the city. I have been working on the twenty-twenty-one wage scale resolution for all current full-time employees. It will reflect the council-approved thirty-cent COLA increase for all full-time employees. A separate resolution setting all part-time and seasonal wages is also being prepared. It will reflect the state mandated fifteen-cent increase to minimum wage that the city also extends to all part-time seasonal positions. Other preparations for the new year include contracting and contacting and confirming various annual contract holders for possible renewals, annual alcohol beverage operating agreement renewals, approval of parades and the designation of our official newspaper and depositories. Provided an update on our Evans Plunge, Minnacotta Springs bond refunding. The closing will occur tomorrow. We're prepared to both send and receive wire transfers to pay off existing bonds, issue new ones and settle on our old and new debt service reserve funds. Debt fund was a highlight for the plunge this year in a difficult year, which was supposed to be celebratory since they, in twenty-twenty, it was their hundred and thirtieth year. So we're gonna shine a light on that bond refunding and remind council that that decision took two years off of the note and saved almost three hundred thousand dollars. The next council meeting, you'll be asked to authorize the annual subsidy transfer from the additional sales tax fund to both Evans Plunge and the golf course. May explain why we wait till that meeting and the projected and budgeted subsidies. The dollar amounts for each of those after the analysis is done will be on the second council agenda for December for your approval. You approved a supplemental budget appropriation on one of the reimbursements we've received for the Jennings Avenue construction. You'll continue to see action items to supplement that when those reimbursements are received. We do have some outstanding requests, and we just approved another claim, so we'll be requesting reimbursement of that as well. I wanna take a moment to thank each of you involved in the governance of our city. I've said it before, but it's worth saying again, the work that each of you do is invaluable. I appreciate you and want you to know it's both an honor and a privilege to work beside you and for the city of Hot Springs and for the betterment of our community. And also grateful for the awesome team at City Hall that I'm lucky to be part of. I'm proud of the work that we've done in twenty-twenty. I hope you are too. I look forward to another great year of growth in twenty-twenty-one.
Any questions for Misty? Thank you, Misty. John?
J R. Evening everyone. It's been busy since the last council meeting. Talked with the I S G. on at least two occasions. Made some decisions about steel coatings and colors to be considered in the bed letting. The under rail lighting was discussed. The column wrap stone veneer was approved as the option. We got the stone color. We did identify some suitable sandstone blocks for the decorative benches and other uses on the suspended sidewalk walkway. Had several conversations with the D O T. about the Highway eighteen-three-eight-five reconstruction, particularly regarding the implications of West Oak project letting schedule, also right-of-way acquisitions. Slowly moving on the north end of the project because there are a lot of out-of-state property owners. But we did pick up a big green space in front of Big Vats with the right-of-way acquisition on the south end of the project, which is exciting green spaces that will kinda offset. I hope our local folks will have even more space for greener. We've talked about the potential cost benefits to the fall bed letting. In my experience, a fall bed letting is always a better contract price than a spring letting. It also gives them the opportunity to begin underground utilities. I suggested try to get the storm drainage at Jennings Avenue taken care of first because we have an easy future around that section, open those businesses back up by summer. Jennings Bridge progress, the deck has been poured. That was a big, big piece of the puzzle. Been wet cured. All the concrete and material strength test have been good. The drainage tiles, the black filling, the eastern western mudments is done. The wiring has been installed for the streetlight replacement. We have delivered the streetlights all cleaned up and pretty, that they can stand up as soon as the handrails in. And they're installing the guardrail now, the sidewalk handrail, the northern and south sides. Phase one Fall River channel improvements. We have the maintenance ramp installed and stable. The riprap layers are installed at the base. And we have the honeycomb type GeoWeb grid installed with soil and sand mix. And we put down the first layer of winter feeding. And we're still determining the best solution for the west bank cut of the ramp with the riprap, but it was stacked stone. North River Street at Evans Plunge, we have located all of our utilities under the A water vein. We performed a geotechnical test, boring to characterize the in-place pavement materials that can underwrite its own conditions. Streets, parks and maintenance and utilities, folks. Just cleaned up the Umerker Park, cleaning, where they do some trees, cutting some trees. Also did tree removal at Brookside. Spent a lot of time with Christmas decorations throughout town. Joint effort between everybody was a response for six-inch water main break. Near somebody's house on Twenty-Fourth Street. We've been working on wastewater pump repairs at the lead station. Sewer Jenny and alley in the Hickory Street. They corrected snow equipment and sanding. And we finally had everybody back from related issues. Had the opportunity to link the department heads, talking about end-of-year expenses, as mine has often mentioned. See what other big-ticket items particularly of the dress of my guys. Hope replacement at Evans Pump Station is a big-ticket item. Needs to be thought of while we have that crane sitting there. We looked at park asset improvements for twenty-twenty-one. Airport improvement, design progress, it's been discussed with Ivan. And a big topic now will be when we're gonna burn the fresh pile again and start collecting information. Try to do that with impact and have enough moisture to actually be able to pull that off. Wishing everyone a safe and happy and healthy holiday season as we get closer. Thank you.
Any questions for John?
Water break on Twenty-Fourth, that homeowner, gotta reimburse the city on that? Actually wasn't in front of the homeowner's house on Twenty-Fourth Street. It was half a block away. But quick thinking on that person's action, probably saved the city some money.
Thank you, John.
First, I want to thank Ed Harvey with the American Legion and Dave Huskins with Verizon for working together to once again have an American flag flying on the Verizon Tower. Some folks may have noticed today that in front of City Hall, the American flag and state flag are flying at half staff. Today marks seventy-nine years since the surprise attack of Pearl Harbor on December seventh, nineteen forty-one, by the Imperial Japanese Navy. An attack that promptly led the United States to declare war on the Empire of Japan, making the attack on Pearl Harbor the immediate cause of the United States' century into World War Two. More than two thousand four hundred Americans died in the attack, including civilians, and another one thousand people were wounded. As Americans, we need to make sure we remember and honor the lives that were lost on this tragic day and history. I want to acknowledge and thank the council for their willingness to make a tough decision regarding the West Oak building. Tonight's decision is one that has been years in the making and has proponents both for saving the building and proponents for demolition. You've listened to both parties of the argument to help inform your decision tonight, and that should be respected by those individuals that may not agree with your decision. On the heels of the West Oak vote, as a city and a community, we need to re-energize our discussions about how Hot Springs remained sandstone, about Hot Springs remaining sandstone buildings. What actions need to be taken to ensure we don't allow any more buildings to deteriorate to the point a future council finds themselves having the same conversation that was necessary for the West Oak building? I'm committed to working with the historic preservation folks and council to identify what actions need to be taken. And finally, I also want to provide additional detail regarding a recent public post from a city employee who feels he received an unwarranted reprimand from a council member. Because the original post was public, it deserves a public response. There's nothing wrong with participating in a public media post, but there is an expectation and a responsibility to ensure the facts are accurate. First, it needs to be said, the meeting with the employee was not a reprimand. Council members don't reprimand employees. Supervisors reprimand employees. There was no reprimand as a result of the meeting. There was no reprimand as a result of the meeting. The meeting came about because of a conversation a council member asked to have with me. They wanted to talk with me about repeated calls they've received from their constituents and their own personal observations related to the employees' use of the city vehicle. After talking with the individual, I asked them to talk with the employee supervisor about their concerns, and the employee was included in that meeting. The purpose of the meeting was to have a casual conversation that provided the employee the opportunity to explain how a city vehicle is currently being used during the workday. That meeting happened on November eighteenth. The councilperson and the employee supervisor met with me after the meeting, and they both said they thought the meeting went well. They mentioned a positive outcome from the meeting was the need to more clearly define the proper use of city vehicles by all city employees, and they would work on a draft of what that document should include. While I'm councilman and as mayor, I also raise the same concerns this council member has observed and was asked to address by voters and their ward. That's what the November eighteenth meeting was about, ensuring city vehicles are used correctly. That's an appropriate conversation for a council member to have with a department head. Some folks might ask why make a fuss out of employees' use of city vehicles? The devil's in the details. A ten-minute coffee break or a one-hour lunch break is appropriate. It's when that ten-minute coffee break grows into a fifteen-minute or a twenty-minute coffee break and the one-hour lunch break grows into an hour and fifteen-minute lunch break, the behavior needs to be addressed. Similarly, while in city vehicles, employees are certainly allowed to stop and purchase lunch or something to drink and to use a bathroom if necessary. But when that behavior grows in time and frequency and is noticed by the public, the public begins to question the appropriateness of that behavior. When employees see use of a city vehicle for any activity that clearly isn't related to their specific job, as a city, how do we justify that? City vehicles are for city use, not private use, regardless of the spend put on that use. It's unfortunate the employee feels he is being targeted, but passive present facts clearly don't support that opinion. With that, made a motion to go into executive session per South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two dash three legal. I make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two dash three legal.
Were you adding board contract to that as well, Bob? Out there.
I was going to do that after we came out of executive session, but I can certainly do that now pursuant to our right to add an executive session, proposing to add to the agenda South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two for contract negotiations.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And there will be council action when we come back out of executive session.
We're gonna have to call an hour.
That's up to you. Okay, Misty, that was made in session?
Ten thirty-four.
All right, I believe there's a motion that needs to be made?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I make the motion to discuss emergency procurement and reception of garbage services for either Sanders sanitation or Kiefer's sanitation beginning January first, twenty twenty-one with a contract being presented to this council at the December twenty-first meeting.
Second.
So this motion is in relation to fighting somebody to continue providing garbage services for the city of Hot Springs after January twenty-first. Earlier, you accepted the request from Fall River Sanitation to end their contract a year early, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, so we need to replace those services, and that's what this motion is about, how we're gonna do that. John, could you share the prices from Sanders and Kiefer that you received?
When I received the termination request from Fall River Sanitation, I immediately put together a quick RFP for one-year contract, and solicited quotations from listed providers in the hub, from Rapid City, or Google Search. Received a quote of ten thirty-four for ninety-six-gallon toker garbage container, which will be our residential container, and three ninety-eight per ninety-six-gallon recycling container. We picked up monthly from Sanders sanitation and from Kiefer. It's fifteen ninety-five for the ninety-six-gallon residential container, five dollars and ninety cents for the recycling container. Also had two no bids, one from Republic Services and one from Waste Management. I recommend at this time that the council consider the bid presented by Sanders sanitation.
Add to the figures that John just shared with you, currently, we're paying ten forty-seven for the ninety-six-gallon toks, ten forty-seven per container. So the Sanders sanitation quote of ten thirty-four, the quick math saves us thirteen cents per container, and the four oh seven for the recyclable containers, new quote is three ninety-eight, so we're saving nine cents. So the council would actually be saving money over our current costs.
Make a motion to accept Sanders sanitation for garbage pickup in twenty twenty-one?
I think we had talked about making the motion of amending the motion.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to amend the motion previously to accept Sanders sanitation beginning January first, twenty twenty-one with a contract being presented to this council at the December twenty-first meeting.
One second. Any more discussion?
This is just to finish out the one-year term, then there'll be a lower RFP drawn a year from now.
Yes. Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, folks.